All right, so we're. I'm good.
I just want. I'm not saying. Oh, it's here, okay. I was gifted one years ago for chairing a committee. All right. We got everybody here. Five fifty-nine. It's here, I'm on.
Is it?
Yeah. We have some here. Yes, okay, okay. There it is. Okay, I'm ready to go if you're ready. Okay. Call the media in the North Syracuse Central School District Board of Education to order, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation. And as well for liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you very much. Begin with a moment of silence for the following. Anna Chifarata, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District, and Donna Parker, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District. Thank you. Going to begin with a proclamation for the school and ADAPEP Councilor Appreciation Day, February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two. Throughout our school buildings, school and ADAPEP counselors have an impact on the district's students and families. They have accepted this exceptional responsibility with commitment, dedication, and love. The school and ADAPEP counselors of the North Syracuse Central School District are professionals of the highest caliber and have dedicated themselves to the ideals of their profession. Students, parents, administrators, and community members recognize, applaud, and appreciate their efforts to ensure students receive quality services. To honor the school and ADAPEP counselors of the North Syracuse Central School Districts and their accomplishments, I, Paul Farfali, a president of the Board of Education of the North Syracuse Central School District, on behalf of the board, express our deepest gratitude and hereby declare February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two, as School and ADAPEP Counselor Day to be celebrated with appropriate educational activities. If I could get a second, second, all in favor. That is carried. Thank you.
I'll be going to the North Syracuse Central School District. We wanted to honor all of you. COVID, we understand how important your positions have been and how crucial you have our families. So, we put John Corolla here that we are going to have these certificates and we have we want to say thank you for all that you do.
Diane S. Perez will come through Gillette No School.
We now have a BPT presentation from North Syracuse Junior High School, so you may come forward and think we're ready for you.
If you can use the mic.
Who wants to go first?
I actually do have a question for you. Noticing that a quarter to nearly a third of the kids are struggling. Do you have enough systems in place to make those phone calls, help those kids? Fifty-seven kids in one day is a lot. And following up on that, you know. Thank you for saying that. I know it's a lot of wear and tear on everybody, kids and adults alike. And that was, that's why I was saying fifty-seven kids in one or four days. And then following up on them again is a lot. So, but it sounds like they're in a cycle now where it's not just the one check-in. You've been checking in a month and then whatever the case might be. Wonderful, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Crabtree always asks questions, right, Mrs. Terros?
Am I on?
Yeah. Okay, don't go back to these slides, and I didn't know how you wanted us to ask questions, so I waited to the end. Very pleased about being the Bosse's representative that you have these alternative programs that we have that you're sending students at the ninth grade level and eighth grade. They're excellent programs, and I know there are need for these students to be in the programs. Is the skate program still at your, at your school? It is not. Okay. Because I know I visited there. They were very, Bosse's was very pleased with your. Thank you, I would relate that. Our next meeting. Kristin, I know you worked hard two or three years ago on the positivity project, and Beth knows about that. That, that's her special project, and you're about the one, one or two schools that started first in our district, and I, I thank you for that. Let's talk about testing. Physics was not given, am I correct this year? Because that would have been, you have one of the, some of the best physics teachers and students and so forth. Okay, I'm not so thrilled about testing now. I'm on the legislative committee with four, three other members here, and I can tell you that the Commission of Education will be putting in to have a waiver again. And also the chancellor from New York City of the Board of Regents. They have been fighting for two years not to have this, the testing. We should not be having testing during COVID. However, President Biden's educational secretary is a tester. So, what happens is, I just want you to know that state education department stuff is supportive of not giving the test. But unfortunately, the federal government, you know, you want funding and stuff, you have to do it. So, they'll be putting that in again because I don't look at these tests. I look at the BMS, I want to know how the kids are doing at school and how they're feeling and how you're feeling. The list at the end that you have up there, kudos to everybody on that list because you give up time. I know I was on the BPT, you don't get paid for it. You, you meet in the morning or the afternoon, and you've got your own papers to mark and stuff. So, everybody on this list should be congratulated because they're giving extra time to it. Connie, forty years, that building will be going on forty years, dear. It was a high school. Now, you were a science teacher, but I, I just figured that out. You know, her and I talked about this, it opened in nineteen eighty-three as the junior high, and it was not going to be there for many years, and here we are forty years later, Connie, you know. Yeah, yeah. Yes, ninety, ninety, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, but I just. But thank you to everybody, to your staff, we appreciate it.
So, I just want to thank you for your presentation, for sharing your. So I just want to thank you for your presentation, for sharing your statistics with us. But also I know you said the counselors are mentally exhausted. I know you all are mentally exhausted as well and your teachers. And we appreciate you. I just want to make sure you know that you are appreciated. And we know how hard you are working. We know this is an impossible situation and we all are hoping it would, will end soon. But I just want to make sure you know we do appreciate you. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Dr. Kramer. Any other questions?
Sure. Four of us went to the musical last week.
Yes.
I'm not on. Am I on by big mouth? But Terry, Dan went, Paul and myself and Mike was there. I don't know if anybody else went. But it was phenomenal. The lead singer was a Smith Rhodes student and two of her teachers were there. Just amazing. Every year it's, it's, and we know we're getting excited about Chicago coming up, but for junior high, that's awesome.
Yes, the recorder. Yeah. That's a fancy toneette. That's all I know. I know no disrespect to recorder players. I just, that's all I know it as. Well, thank you very much. I know it's much more than a toneette. I don't, I don't want to get like online slaughtered here. So CNS, you're up for your BPT. I think so. I think it's good enough personally. I, I. I mean, it's. I think we, I don't think we need them off, but. PowerPoints are designed to work in a, in a lit room.
Okay, thank you so much for inviting us here tonight to share our goals for CNS and some of our advances, achievements and celebrations. This evening I have Carol Gaynor presenting with me, Greg Broton, Sarah Keys, and the rest of our administrative team is sitting in the audience. So if you take a look, we've got our current enrollment. We did go down a little bit. Our free and reduced lunch, we're sitting at 34%. We have a total of 216 staff. And right now currently we've got 147 students that are either in our AM, PM, or new visions Bosse's programs. This is our building mission that we've had for the last couple of years and it's so much more relevant this year. There's a huge focus on social emotional. This year we truly felt that it was important to go back to basics and focus on building relationships with our students. Besides greeting every student by name each day, we've asked our staff to do a check in each day during class. Some of our teachers are using mood meters. They do verbal check ins, notebooks. They have their kids text them on remind just to see where they are emotionally for that day. And if they do seem like they're in a little bit of need, the teachers reach out to the student's school counselor and someone checks in with that kid that day.
All right. Some of our first academic goal is to develop and implement instructional strategies to assist students in reaching their academic potential. We will provide students access. Access to explore and participate in college and career experiences. One of the things that we implemented this year is the workshop classes in both math and science to cover pretty much every block throughout the day. In all sciences, both living environment, chemistry and physics, along with, actually there's an earth science one as well. We've also opened up morning extra help in all core areas. So students arriving at 7:15 have about 25 to 30 minutes of time to get into see an extra help in the morning as well, also in all core areas, along with math help during the different blocks. We still are focused on our walk across, usually walk across Wednesday, but now it's focused study hall for seniors. So now it's across different blocks throughout the day and they take those, those seniors who are in danger of graduating and they worked with them to get, you know, their credits caught up.
We, we thought that it was important to maximize our time with students during the actual instructional day. It's really hard to get students to stay after school. A lot of our kids have obligations after school, whether it be working, watching younger brothers and sisters. So that's why we felt it was important to continue offering and expand upon our workshop classes, our extra help class. We offer an English 10 workshop class that really focuses on the skills of reading and writing and continuing to diversify our course offerings. A couple of years ago, we've really focused on our science classes and taking those year long, difficult science classes and splitting them up into half year classes. So that has seemed to work out really well for our kids. It gives them more options of different science, science classes to take. This year we also did offer a virtual college fair for our kids. It was all online. We've done the ASVAB and we're continuing to do job shadows and we're making connections with with community partnerships so that our kids can really get a good taste of what it's like in the work world. So.
Okay, so historically we've always presented our region score data, but given that we haven't really had mandatory regions since pre-COVID, we decided to take a look at our passing rates and course credits earned that are required for New York State High School graduation in English and math courses over the past three years. So I know there's a lot going on this slide, so I just really want to pinpoint. So as you can see here on this ELA slide, the dashed vertical lines represent the average of overall final course grades in English 10, English 11 and English 12. And they fall well into the passing range. And then if you take a look, it's kind of, I, on my screen in my office, it looks dark green or dark gray, but this I would call it gray so that it's a little bit thicker than the other colors. And that represents the average course scores from the past three years all averaged together and we're falling at an 83. And if you want to take a look at the math. And then math, we looked at algebra one, algebra two and geometry. And again, let's take a look at that gray. It's kind of just ahead of that green, the lime green line. And that represents the past three years' final course grades in algebra one, algebra two and geo, and we're falling at 79. And other things to take in consideration, it was really hard to come up with academic data because over the past three years, we've had such extreme changes in instructional and how we're presenting information. One from K or okay, and all of a sudden the world shut down and everyone's virtual. And that was a whole nother learning curve. And now we're getting back, but we're finding virtual is all, there's pieces of the virtual instruction that help kids be successful as well. So working on those pieces.
And as with everybody noticed across the board, with COVID, we have been also dealing with chronic absenteeism. So our goal there is to educate students and families on the importance of daily attendance and to help ensure academic success. Students are expected to be present and actively engaged daily during their scheduled class time. To be present is to learn.
So as Kristin said in the last presentation, in order for a student to be considered chronically absent, they must miss more than 10% of the school year. So the, over the course of the entire school year, that's 18 days. Last year, we had 55.7% of our kids considered chronically absent. But if you remember, our schedule last year was pretty wonky. We have kids and we had school, kids in school once a day, I'm sorry, once a week. Then we moved to two times a week. Then we moved to four times a week. With most of, with over half of our students, they were considered virtual for most of the school year. So if they didn't log in using ClassLink, then their attendance didn't count for the day. So we did have some kids that had some difficulties with that. So this year, we're sort of getting back to normal, you know, still dealing with a pandemic. We are in school five days a week, but we do still have to contend with mandatory quarantines and isolation. So this year as a result, we're currently sitting at 38.5% chronically absent. It's still not pretty, but it is better than last year. The COVID restrictions are easing. So we do hope that this attendance rate does go up from here.
Some strategies that we're using to deal with chronic absenteeism. We've mailed flyers to all parents highlighting the importance of their children attending school regularly. Those went out with newsletters. They go out with report cards as well. They're part of the, the newsletter that, that Jamie sends out regularly. We've updated our attendance letters so they sound less punitive and, and more, how can we help you get to school more often? And in addition, when we do have our, the students that are identified as chronically absent, a series of phone calls are made home with the counselors and the mental health offices first, and then administrators, and then even some home visits made to those chronically absent students. We've developed a mentor program for sophomores that's just getting kicked off. We've identified 63 sophomores with the most severe attendance problems. They've been paired with volunteer teachers who will mentor them, check in with them, just see how they're doing. Try to work out an attendance plan with them. And again, we are working with our seniors with the new version of, of walk across Wednesday. And we're hoping that those 63 sophomores with the earlier intervention won't be in that same sort of precarious situation once they're seniors. These are just examples of the mailers that go home to parents and appear in the newsletter, giving them the message that attendance is important and giving them all the contact information that they need to, to check in and get the help that they need to get their kids to school.
This year we also developed a social emotional learning goal. And our goal is to continue to explore creative opportunities while implementing strategies to assist the growth of students' social and emotional wellbeing. We did give the biomass screening. We'll be talking about that in the next slide. And also each month we have a focus with students within that month as far as SEL. Some of those months that we've had at the positivity project, which is concurrently always throughout the year. Suicide Awareness Day, Chalk the Walk, Project Connect, More Than Sad. It was a meeting with parents. And then also mental health presentations during their physical education classes. And also in the month of January, the therapy dogs did join us for a little while during the day.
Okay, so the biomass is a universal screener that assesses social emotional learning competencies in students. And just to piggyback off of the junior high, it is a tool that can help us assess students individually in a classroom, across a grade level, or even building wide. So when we did this in the fall, we went in first focusing on that item 24 self harm. Again, we approached it the same way. We met with all the secondary principals and we all mapped out how we are going to handle any students that reported as self harm. And same thing, we had all hands on deck, social workers who spread it out over the course of a week. And then of course that cycle is continuing to follow. I think our biggest takeaway from that is because every time a counselor, a social worker met with the student, a phone call was also made home. It was taxing, but it was nice to have that follow through. And you know, many parents, we had fortunately a lot of parents saying, yes, I know something's going on. We're on a waiting list. So we kind of helped fast track some kids to getting some outside counseling as well as saying, hey, we have, we have liberty resources here that we can get going for you. So parents are super appreciative too of the follow up and there continues to be follow up. And we're keeping our social workers super busy and they're amazing. They're really an amazing asset to our building. But then another takeaway from this is I'm like, there's got to be more than just looking for self harm here. So if you just take a look here at this slide, the larger green areas indicate areas of strength and where our students fall in the typical range in relation to other students, their age across the nation, because this is a norm reference screener. And you can see responsible decision making is one area of strength for our students based on the data that was collected in the fall. The yellow and red represent areas of concern. So this is showing us that an area of concern for students at CNS is student self awareness. And we do see our students struggling with identifying and analyzing their own emotions and how they impact their own behavior and affect others around them. So again, knowing that we have been implementing and just as Jamie had said earlier, you know, giving teachers strategies that they can implement right in their tier one instruction. And it just make it kind of a natural part that's just happening. It becomes a natural interaction between teachers and students and teachers touching base with students and students feeling comfortable touching base with their teachers.
And we also developed a PLC goal as well, where the department leaders will work with their departments to offer support in the following areas of instructional strategies, best practices and data driven instruction. PLCs will have time during department meetings or other designated times to meet such as half days to go over data and discuss instructional strategies.
We've got, you know, many, many groups. We're very much like the junior high. We're departmentalized. And so, you know, a lot of our global teachers, they'll meet up together and they'll work on common assessments, common activities that they're doing with their kids. And they'll analyze the data. So we're really lucky that we are so departmentalized because it's just a natural thing that forms. Finally, our building celebrations, the most, you know, we're the most thing, the most thing that we're most excited about. So we had our ice cream social in August. So this was the first year that we've ever done that. We welcomed the entire school back. Any student could come tour the building, play bingo with us and get some ice cream with their families. We've done two spirit weeks so far. We've given out 296 North Star Pride Awards. And those North Star Pride Awards are anchored with our building focus of our core values on personal responsibility, respect, integrity, discipline and engagement. We also worked together with Paige's pajama Rama. You know, we've been doing that for many years. It benefits pediatric cancer patients. This year is a district, we raised over $11,000 for pediatric cancer. We teamed up with Liverpool, West Jenny and FM to raise over $27,000, our four high schools. We're currently looking for a couple other partners, high schools to team up with in the area so that we can, you know, get that goal even higher. Our principal's cabinet was nominated for outstanding youth and philanthropy. It was an award given out in December, I think. Uh, it was an award given out in December, I think. In addition, principal's cabinet helped to sort over twenty thousand dollars worth of books a couple of Saturdays ago at the canteen. Our sports teams, they've all done incredibly well. Our production of Twelve Angry Jurors in the fall was truly amazing. And we are looking forward to, as Bob said, to see what our talented students, uh, put on for Chicago. And these are just a couple of snapshots of things that we've done this year. We've got the Therapy Dogs there, our Spirit Weeks, our Kids and Tools for Change. Uh, we did a photo contest, one of the law firms down in the city. That North Star Pride Award was from our recent North Star Pride Awards. And then our fax classes, they're always cooking up something good in their, in their classrooms. Here are BPT members. Um, as Bob said earlier, they all work very, very hard. We meet monthly and we really try to figure out what our goals and what our focus is going to be for the school year. And is there any questions?
I completely agree on the Therapy Dog. I actually have a positive Central New York Therapy Dog. So as Jamie heard earlier today, um, I, you know, sixty-three sophomores at risk. One grade with that many, and then we had to add in the other two. Uh, how are you coping, handling, you know, yourselves and the kids with that? You know, we just heard fifty-seven kids in an entire junior high. And your one grade is higher than their one, their whole school.
So what we did was, we put together a list of students that were at risk and, oh, thank you. And our teachers volunteered. You know, they might've had a connection with one of their kids on there. They might not have known any. And we have, it's not just teachers that have decided to mentor. We have secretaries, TAs, they've all really, everyone in the Billy, building really has stepped up to try to help get our kids focused so that they can be successful at the school.
Fantastic, and I know, Jamie, we've talked about everywhere that you could possibly find it. Websites, newsletters, on the walls, uh, between the kids. For the adults and the kids, any help, mental health that they need, anything they're struggling with. You've found every possible avenue to let everybody know there's a resource. So I wanted to say great job on that too.
Thank you.
So Jamie, um, thank you so much for your presentation, all of you. Um, when I read your, um, building mission, I put a big heart in my notebook. I mean, that is fabulous. Um, I also love your mantra to be present. I mean, that was so on point. Um, and also everything you're doing to help with the chronic absenteeism. Um, it, it's just frightening to me that that's happening and, um, parents, I don't know what's going on, if they're just not paying attention. Um, I'm glad you included copies of the flyers and, um, also all the contact information. You're giving them all the tools they need to help get their, their child back on track. And I'm wondering if, um, now isn't the time to like individualize it for that specific kid? And, you know, there's going to come a time, decisions are going to have to be made. I mean, kids, if you don't do the work, then you can't be promoted. I mean, this is how it is in life and they have to do the work. These are life lessons for these kids and you're giving them everything they need.
So what we do, um, this is more for students that are academically struggling. Our, the house principals, they meet with every single senior that's at risk of not graduating. And our deans have come up with the idea of meeting with the sophomores and the juniors. So every kid who's academically struggling is getting, um, some face-to-face time with an administrator so that we can help come up with a game plan and get, and get them on track.
That is fantastic, and you have a team of superstars there. And I just want to thank you so much for everything you're doing. Um, I appreciate you, we all appreciate you. Um, we know it isn't easy. And, you know, you've been so creative to just keep, you know, buckling down and trying to come up with new ideas. And if it doesn't work, moving on to something else and just being there for, um, the students in our district. And you guys are the best. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Okay, thank you very much. Yeah. Move on to, uh, the Board of Education Committee reports. And I will start with Mr. Scanlon, if you have some comments about policy. I, I know he just, we just did that, so I guess you got a meeting coming up.
Yeah, so, um, our next policy committee meeting is March first. And I also want to mention where we have a discussion item on our board agenda tonight for the Erie One BOSI Service, so we'll be talking about that later.
Thank you. The Legislative Committee, tell us all about last week.
No, 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 no. I, I could, yeah.
Or don't.
You hear enough of me. Um, so we met on, um, uh, January twenty-sixth, right? Yes. And, uh, we went over the forty-four-ten plan again, which our legislators are pushing back to Governor Hochul, who pocket-vetoed it, if you didn't know that. That's the funding for Main Street, but it looks like things are going to work out there. Don went through the Foundation Aid shortfall. Um, we went through the budget update, um, through, uh, the governor's office, what she did. And then we talked a little bit about our budget, which we'll see for the first time February twenty-eighth. Um, it's always a good meeting. I don't want to get into the other ones. Um, I'm going to let you talk a little bit, Paul, about those, so, thank you. Our next meeting is March second, and I think at that time, we'll see the preliminary school budget. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Superintendent's comments, Mr. Bowles.
Thank you. To follow up with Bob, yes, uh, the other week, uh, the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, the musical at the junior high was unbelievable. We have such talented young men and ladies. It is, I mean, the, the musical went on for an hour and forty minutes with only a fifteen-minute intermission. And the memorization, uh, the choreography, it was just top-notch. And that was at the eighth and ninth grade level. And so i- it was something to, to see, so I was very impressed. Um, and then the Saturday was all county music that was on YouTube. And I was looking at band orchestra and chorus. And so several of our students were participating in that. Um, as Mr. Crabtree would say, um, our boys and girls varsity basketball did play this past Tuesday against their rival Liverpool. Uh, the girls won their game, the boys won their game. But one of the special pieces about the whole event was halftime of the boys' game. So what they do is all of the elementary, uh, phys ed teachers are there and they have, um, all of the students, uh, for the, were the girls. And they have a basketball shootout, so the families were there, the young ladies were there. There's a trophy almost the size of many of the students for the winner. And I believe Cicero, uh, won, but it was just a special night all the way around. Um, this Saturday, and, uh, we met with, uh, on a webinar with Rick Timms. And he, uh, talked about a lot of the things and talked about Foundation Aid. And I don't know if Paul's going to mention some of these things, but, um, just getting, giving us more information. And it's always nice to, uh, see Rick, but it's a, a time to get to our legislators and let them know the issues that everyone is facing, uh, currently. Um, the last piece I have is of trying to get into some buildings. I was in Allen Road, Rox Mill, and Gillette, uh, the other day to see some of the special things that they're doing. And, uh, the BPT presentations are spot-on. Our, our, our staff and our students, when you're watching the activities, the engagement, that, and you're seeing them smile and light up, those are the things added to the academic pieces. But that socialization and that connection is just paramount. And our students desperately need as much of that as possible. And I want to thank the board for the added resources because as you hear, some of the, the BPTs, either the additional social workers or the additional counselors, they were definitely needed in order to help with the situations that they're facing. So thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Bowles. Board of Education comments, uh, I'll just mention that, as, as Superintendent mentioned and Bob mentioned, we had Central New York School Boards Association Legislative Breakfast. You had to bring your own breakfast at your house and zoom in. I don't know how many were able to, uh, join into that because you really couldn't see. I know there were over thirty participants is what I heard at one point, but I couldn't see who was on there. But it was, uh, similar to where it, what it always is, but different in that the, I think, Dr. Tim's presentation was a bit more optimistic, uh, given where we are this year. Uh, but we did have access to all our legislators or their representatives that were there. Uh, so, so I thought it was productive. Uh, you had to send your questions via, yeah, chat or a Q and A. I sent a bunch in there, I don't, I, I did get them. Uh, did, did you see them? I don't know if you, oh, I didn't know if you could see them or not. I think one probably never had a question mark at the end, it was more of a commentary, but that, that's what happens when I get going. Uh, but, uh, they, uh, I, I had some of the answers came back to me just from Dr. Tim's, uh, through that chat, so there wasn't a lot of discussion around things. But, you know, that's something I hope we can, uh, get back to in person, hopefully next year. One, one thing I, I noticed, and I know maybe, I don't know if anybody wants to react to it, but, uh, we're specifically not asking for any tweaks or changes in the foundation formula as, as a school district here, but we veer somewhat from NISBA, New York State School Boards platform, which is asking for change in the formula. So I, I tried to make that point in a question. I know Dan has sent that letter to Sterpy, Assemblyman Sterpy, excuse me. And, uh, he seemed to be in tune with that, that issue. So that's just something I wanted to point out, that, uh, we're asking for full funding in the formula to play out before we go back and tweak it. And I, I don't know that that is the, uh, what's going on across the state for the most part. So there's something to keep an eye on. Other Board of Ed comments? Yes, sir.
Real quickly, so also there was the Capitol Conference, which was, um, on February second, which was, Paul's been pushing me to go to some of this, and I'm not a virtual, but I've got my Chromebook now, Jill, so I'm, I'm in heaven. So, um, it was excellent because you had all the top people there. You had Dr. Rosa, um, who's the, um, you know, was chancellor at one time and now is our commissioner. First, uh, first thing she talked about was diversity, equity, and inclusion for all students, for all students. She talked about that first. Um, the rebuilding of the State Ed Department, which will, Don and, um, Dan, definitely, we need this. There, the governor's proposal has added a lot of jobs in, uh, the State Ed Department. And that'll affect us with our building, you know, our construction and so forth. So I was glad to hear that. Um, talked about teacher recruitment and retention. Uh, it's the greatest profession ever, we all know that. And we need to prepare our students to, to become excellent teachers. And I just heard a certain board member crossed the way, is going into education. I'm so proud of him for doing that. Um, one thing she was critical about, uh, Dr. Rosa was temporary certificates for teachers in classrooms. She's, the governor is pushing for that, but she's going to be meeting with the governor. She doesn't think that's the answer. They have these temporary certificates, and also people that have lost their certificates. Uh, but obviously paying, um, or letting teachers go over the, the cap for coming back. But the big one for me, and it should be for our district, deals with BOSIs. And Dan will know this, and, and Don also, is that there's been a cap on CTE, Career Technology, for thirty thousand dollars for years and years and years. So as they, uh, Don just told me, you've been working on the BOSIs budget for our school district, what we're going to do. We have to limit the number of students going because it's expensive. And so they're going to double the cap. So that will mean that we, as the board, can have, um, more students go into different fields in BOSIs. So that's going to be a big push in there, but it was great. And then I want to say about Saturday is we've got the best legislators in New York State. Believe me when I tell you, Senator May, and we're losing her. There's, in the new redistricting, she will not have our school district. We learned that at the basketball game. Um, Pam Hunter, she's one of my hero, heroes, Senator Mannion, you know, I, I can text him during his presentation. Um, and I always, his wife and our good friends, um, of course, Al Sterpy. We have the best, we have the best. We're going to have a new person that will cover Cicero. And I know nothing about him, so we'll find out. So it was a great week, I mean, to, to learn a lot about legislation. My one last thing is March first, different topic. We've set up a date to visit, um, OCMBOSIs. And I do realize, Beth, and, and, and you're working, so I just wanted to set up a date, if it was possible. At night is not really good or late afternoon because the students are gone and you want to see the students. So we're going to be meeting March first earlier, I believe it's eight-thirty at CTE, so we can actually see the students that are doing carpentry and doing, um, cosmetology and doing automo. We, we actually can see the students and talk to the North Syracuse kids. Then we're going to go over to Stars and go there. And the one thing I know Paul liked, uh, and Michael liked too, at Innovation Tech, we'll get down and sit down with, uh, five to six kids that are North Syracuse kids. Why are you going to Innovation Tech? Tell us what is good about, um, the program. Why did you not go to CNS? It, it's good. And then end up at Crown Road for the special ed. And then it will be my treat for lunch. Yeah, put that down, Paul, at the retreat. Since our, since our kids can't do any food over there at BOSIs, it's my treat for those that want to go.
Well, thank you. You, you could come, you can come out for the lunch. Oh.
Can I go back?
Can I go back to this, um, junior high musical again? That, uh, to talk about the kids being so talented. But I actually got to talk to a couple of the parents and, um, the, the lead actor. But going to the parents, um, shy kids went up on that stage and you would not know for one second that those were shy kids up there, ones that don't, you know, they're quiet otherwise. And one in particular, I don't want to point on anyone else, but, um, did an amazing, just animated job. And her mom said that, uh, one of the girls on stage, obviously, but, uh, mom said that she really doesn't talk. And she really, you know, so my point is, um, actually, I want to say to the lead actor as well, to see her hold that end scene for that long. Shouts out to that director for getting these kids to come out of their shell, to know how to act in a scene, to just, it was unbelievable what these teachers brought out of these kids. So I wanted to shout out, um, to that.
Thank you. Okay, we will move on to our action items. And I'd like to have a motion for the consideration, the approval of the minutes of the meeting of January 24th. Motion from Dr. Kramer, second from Ms. Kruger. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Pose that is carried. I get a motion for items B, C, and D. Motion from Mr. Thorne, second from Ms. Kruger. We are putting B, C, and D together as usual. They are the classification of disabled students for school, preschool, and home instruction. Any question that's before us? Seeing none, all in favor? Pose that is carried. We have a discussion item that is about the proposal we've had before us with regards to policy services from Erie One BOCIs. So I have a question somewhere in here. And we, we don't have action on this at this point. We're just, we're just discussing. I mean, I looked, I looked at the materials and the letter, though I think it was from Don or between Don and Erie One BOCIs. And what, what, what part were we looking at? I saw we were looking at the actual overall service to build the manual. But I didn't know, I noticed they had three levels. I don't know if you've talked to anybody or looked at it, three levels of, I want to call them maintenance afterwards. I didn't know which one, were we looking for the whole?
Well, that...
Any thoughts on that?
That's up for discussion. So this is just another BOCI service. We have many services that we use through BOCIs. And it's an, um, an opportunity for us to have them look at our policy manual and make sure we're in line with all the, um, regulations and the laws and kind of, um, get us back in line if we're not. Um, get us set up. It's a two-year process to, um, have them do this. And it wouldn't change how we currently handle our policy committee.
And that's one of the things we want to emphasize. And I know Carol's here. We, we want to make sure that our policy committee stays intact. One of the benefits that, uh, they do have is they service so many other districts. It allows us to take a look at all the other districts and be in line with policies and procedures, uh, a- across the state. And so when there are new things that come up, uh, we can make sure that our, our policies are reviewed and come back to us so that, uh, they are up to date, uh, with, with what other districts or what current issues are happening.
I also had a question, which I believe, um, Dan just answered, but autonomy with the policies. It does appear that that is here. We can, uh, make changes as we did with the, um, he, she, to they, there, which was a discussion on our last meeting. But with that, it also mentions that we can go back to our attorneys when we have a question about the autonomy in a particular policy. With the addition of these services, which I, I do think they're great to be in line with everybody else and have an idea of what everybody else is thinking, would this then save on our attorney's costs? You're nodding yes.
Well, that's, that's what we're hoping.
That, that is definitely the case. And, um, again, whenever you subscribe to a coser with BOCIs, uh, the, these are things that are, that we get aid on. And it allows us to do things, uh, to, to help us with our cost.
Fantastic, because yes, that's what I was thinking. If we're going back to the attorneys to ask again, there would be no savings. But what they're saying is that because some of these things are written and we're just going to say, yep, we agree, yep, we agree. We don't have to go back to the attorney and that's going to save us a ton. Okay.
They have their own legal.
Fantastic. Oh, sorry, that's what you were saying. If we have, we don't have to go back to our attorneys, we can go to BOCIs attorneys. And that's not, that, so that eliminates that entire attorney cost. That is a big deal. Thank you.
We still have the option if we have specific questions for our district to take things to our attorneys. So that would, you know, still be on the table if it was needed.
But there would be certain things that would be obvious that we probably would eliminate going to our attorney with because it's in line and we agree and it's already been vetted.
Correct.
Excellent.
So, and if anybody else, please chime in. But I, so we're only looking at the policy service right now? Are we also looking at the, uh, the administrative manual that they talk about? Or is that something down the road?
It could be something down the road. Right now, we're looking at the policy manual.
Yeah.
So again, my, my que- I don't have any problem with any of this, except my question is the, the level, maintenance levels afterwards. I mean, with, with us, with a, a function policy committee that's unlike, I'm familiar with a few other districts. They haven't never, don't have anything quite as comprehensive as we do here. What do we, what do we need or is there a recommendation? Uh, I mean, to me, just from what I've read and understand, I was looking at the level two or level three. But, uh, I didn't know if we needed the full audit every year when we have a committee going through it or if you felt that that was something that was useful to...
So I don't think we have to make that decision right now.
Okay.
That's something that we can think about. Yes, and it's a, it's a two-year process for them to get our policy manual in line.
And, and they explained to us that sometimes if districts do want more, they can make that change. Um, some districts have jumped in at one level and then they've opted to go to another level, um, down the road. So we do have options.
Okay, that, that, I feel better because I was not understanding where to go with that piece. Any others? So at this point, would we go forward next board meeting with a resolution? If...
No.
Oh. Well, well.
And Bob, you had discussions with other districts through your BOCIs and...
Our BOCIs uses it.
Yeah.
We, we just don't have the, OC and BOCIs just doesn't have that, um, you know, ability to do it at any time. The practice of the civil practice of the postpartum, as I said, uh, lots of districts in this area.
Yeah, as long as we, you know, maintain our autonomy and our...
Yeah.
Policy committee. Because it's, it's not something you see everywhere, at least I have not.
Right.
So... Okay, thank you. No other questions, I'll move on to discussion action items and look for a motion for item A, which is abolishing 1.0 FTE Secretary One and creating 1.0 FTE School Secretary Two. At motion from Mr. Thorne, second from Ms. Scanlon. Any discussion there? I believe that was referenced in a Friday letter. Okay, all in favor? Pose that is carried. Declaration non-marketable surplus. If I get a motion, put that before us, motion from Mr. Herman, second from Dr. Kramer. Any discussion there? Seeing none, all in favor? Pose that is carried. A motion to put C before, well, here, we don't really need a motion, we need a nomination. We've, uh, we've all received our information on the representative that we have to nominate for the BOCIs board. It was sent to us, so yes, we make a motion. Wait, we have a motion from Mr. Crabtree, second from Ms. Scanlon. This is up for discussion. You raise your hand, would you like to discuss, Bob? No. I just, I want to thank Bob for the service you've done. And, and I'm going to thank you for offering to continue. And your nomination is up before us now. But, uh, clearly have a passion for BOCIs and what it offers this district. And I appreciate you doing that. And they've, you've done it before when you weren't on the board, when you were on the board previously. So, thank you. Seeing nothing else, we'll take a vote, all in favor? Oh, yes, you may, as a board member. Okay, that is carried, your nomination goes forward. Thank you. Okay, I have, uh, to announce the, the following retirements. I have to enlarge this a little bit. At the following retirements, you'll be acting on personnel items A and B tonight. We have Lena Artuso, Teaching Assistant, retiring with 33 years of service. Bridgette Burns, Teaching Assistant, retiring with 42 years of service. Nancy Collins, Elementary Teacher, retiring with 29 years of service. Cheryl Zarnicki, Teaching Assistant, retires with 4.5 years of service. Sandra Elmer, Teaching Assistant, retires with 22 years of service. Monica Fitzgerald, Reading Teacher, retires with 27 years of service. Claudia Hertzberg, Math Teacher, retiring with 15 years of service. John Jack McAndrew, Dean of Students, retires with 27 years of service. Arlene Osborne, Elementary Teacher, retires with 22 years of service. Peggy Parker, Reading Teacher, retires with 25.7 years of ser- of service. Antonetta Santa Ferrara, Special Education Teacher, retires with 26 years of service. Kathleen Schuman, Teaching Assistant, retired with 20 years of service. Eileen Spillane Healy, Speech Therapist, retires with 35 years of service. Rose Marie Stagnita, Teaching Assistant, retired with 17 years of service. Michael Thompson, Elementary Teacher, retires with 36 years of service. Susan Nguyen, Elementary Teacher, retired with 42 years of service. Regina Deverne, Typist One, retired with 54 years of service. And Neil Door, Custodial Worker One, retired with 16.3 years of service. So I, you can hear my voice. I mean, the, the, the number of years that I just ravelled off, and I won't even do the math, but, in some of the individuals, but in the total altogether is scary. And that, yes, sir, Jason. Vicki, oh, I'm having a little trouble here. Thank you. Vicki Sicknick, Teaching Assistant, retired with 20 years of service. Thank you very much for pointing that out. I do have an eye appointment next week. This is true, I made it today. Uh, my, my glasses aren't working like they used to. My ears aren't either, nothing is, so... But it's, I, I read this the other day and I just, I was, it was staggering. And we talked about the need for educators, we talked about what's going on right now, and we talked about the shortage. And this is, this is our second big, long list besides. So I want to thank these folks and wish them happy, healthy, lengthy retirement. Instructional Personnel Report A. If I get a motion, I said before, it's motion from Mr. Crabtree, second from Ms. Kruger. That is before us? Yes, sir. Yep. Thank you. Okay, A is before us. All in favor? Pose that is carried, Support Staff B Personnel, Support Staff Personnel. Motion from Mr. Thorne, second from Ms. Scanlon. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Pose, and that is carried. Okay, I'd like to make a motion for executive session. To move into executive session for the purpose of reviewing the employment records of two individuals with no action to follow, to receive an update on negotiations with a member of the Princels Bargaining Unit with action to follow, to discuss premium substitute proposals, substitute bus drivers, and to, to receive, excuse me, receive an update on negotiations with the Nurse Bargaining Unit. That is a motion before you. If I get a second on that, second, Ms. Scanlon. Any discussion? Okay, so we will be coming back in after for one item. All right, all in favor? Pose, we are in executive session, a motion for adjournment for now. Motion from Mr. Moody Wuzik, second from Mr. Thorne. Any discussion, all in favor? Pose. Thank you very much, we're adjourned.